I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for July 11, 2017 at 6:30 PM. Hello, everyone, and happy slurpy day. It's 7-Eleven. The most, yeah. Can't believe the lines at 7-Eleven today. Tonight on our consent agenda, we're going to hopefully approve the June 7 special meeting minutes, the June 13, 27 regular meeting, and the June 27 work session minutes. Approval of the monthly financial reports, approval of the June check register and bank balances, legal costs on projects are going to be reviewed, and the department had monthly reports for June. Items on our regular agenda are discussion and direction on the transient lodging tax and city council appointment process. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Neese? Present. Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stempel? Here. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I have none.
All right. Business from the audience. Has everyone submitted their yellow card if they'd like to speak? All right, Tammy.
Les Poole.
Les Poole, I live in Cornell Place. I, excuse me, getting a little bit of the stuff in my throat all of a sudden. I was at the Parks Board meeting. I'm the liaison to the planning commission, and I'm sure Neil will probably have some comments because he's a liaison to the Parks Board for the council. But I just want to thank everybody that's been involved for getting, rolling along with a master plan for the parks. Obviously, it's going to take some tweaking, and I won't get into the details, other than just encourage people to weigh in and thank everyone that's brought it as far as they have. It's going to be real interesting. We've only got so many dollars, and I know that, like with all budgets and all futures, our hopes are bigger than our wallets. And for the city to move forward with our parks, one of the best things folks can do is what they've been doing, and that's volunteering. And so I just want to thank everyone that's been putting time and energy into it. Thank you, Les.
Thank you. Next. Babs Coughlin.
I'm the sales manager of the 24 Hour Fitness. It's opening up on July 29. I wasn't sure what to expect from the meeting, so I would venture that if anybody has any questions about the building, or the amenities that we offer, or what the parking looks like, or anything that might be of interest to anybody here, I have all the answers in this little black folder. So, we do give away free passes if anybody wants to come check out the gym, and the grand opening date is July 29th, this Saturday.
Well, I keep being asked, is there a pool?
There is a pool. We have confirmation from the horse's mouth.
There you go.
Yes. Jacuzzi sauna, steam room, towel service, water aerobics, lap swim. Perfect.
Where?
Right down the street, right here by the wall.
Oh, I know where that is.
Oh, on the bottom floor.
Really?
It's going to be facing the river. There will be a sweeping river view in the pool area, as well as on the cardio jack. And it is situated where you can actually see a convergence of the streams, so it's just lovely. I was in there today, and it's just, it's going to, our regional vice president said it was the most beautiful club in the region. Just hand down.
Above ground pool or below ground? I've been, I ride by the-
Below ground.
-all the time. I just never saw them building a pool. That's interesting.
Yeah, and the pool, we're actually having, incidentally, we're having a soft opening on the 17th, so people can actually come in, take tours of the facility. We'll have group exercise classes kind of going. It'll be like a secret, like secret society. You've got another secret password. No, I'm just kidding. So, you can, the password is "fitness." So, and here's what else we're going to have, and this I really, it's not something the other clubs have, so it's kind of neat. It's virtual classes. Now, we're not substituting that for live instructors. We still have live instructors. But there's a screen with a life-size virtual instructor where you can program it on the outside to teach you Zumba, and there's an instructor to take you through a Zumba class. Same thing in the cycling room. There will actually be a screen that will take you through the Champs-Élysées in Paris.
Wow.
It's just Wi-Fi. Anybody love Wi-Fi? Yeah? We got some Wi-Fi lovers in the crowd? Okay, good. So, you know, all the bells and whistles, cutting-edge, state-of-the-art, everything you could possibly want in a gym, except a basketball court. We will not be having a basketball court. Very common question. If you don't have a court, you've got to go to Clackamas.
It's all right. They just wanted a pool. That's all I keep being asked about.
And this is relevant as well. If anybody in, you know, in the room have a local business that they want to advertise, there is no cost to be a vendor at our grand opening. So, may have to be kind of in line, like we can't have, like, hamburger and hot dog vendor.
Donuts.
We can't have donuts. But we do have donuts on the fly. So, that's a graveyard shift type of vendor. No, I'm kidding. So, if you have a business, like, you know, a chiropractor, or, you know, anything, really, or you want to give away coupons, or you want to advertise your business, like, there's no cost to be a vendor. You can set up all day, talk to the community. Gresham had 1,500 non-members come into its building on grand opening day.
Wow.
So, I would anticipate high levels of traffic if I do my job well. So, that's kind of what's going on.
Well, thank you very, very much.
Any other questions?
Just add to that, July the 29th, as she said, 10 o'clock, so let's be supportive, and let's all show up and help 24 Hour Fitness have a wonderful opening.
We promise a good time.
Yes. They've got, they have lots of fun things planned.
Followed by a workout.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Babs. Tell Erin thank you.
I will. I'll give your back to Sebo.
Okay.
Do we have any more? Bill Osborne?
Bill Osborne, 7160 Monteverde, my daughter Alexis. Just wanted to check in on the SOLV cleanups. We had one a few weeks ago on-
24th.
Yeah, 24th. Anyway, that was one of those days where it was 100 degrees out, so we didn't have a big turnout on that day, and unfortunately, we didn't collect a lot of garbage, maybe because it's clean down there and people just couldn't find it, or maybe because of the small turnout. Anyway, we have one coming up here, July 22nd. We also have one on August 19th, and then September on the 23rd. That's the big river and beach cleanup that SOLV does, so looking for volunteers. If anybody wants to come out and help us, certainly would appreciate that, or if you know somebody, or you can just talk to people and let them know what's going on.
What was the July one again?
July 22nd.
22nd.
And those are from 10:00 AM to noon, so we're just out there a couple hours. I set up on the bridge there at Cross Park, so real visible. That way, I can send people different directions. I usually try to get down that trail at High Rocks where the bathroom is there, where the lifeguards are, also the park area, and we get a lot of people that'll walk across the bridge down to, I believe it's McLaughlin, and back up and walk that. They'll grab bags and grabbers and pick up. We also try to get people over on the Oregon City side, so try to get a balance of both sides of the river, getting cleaned up, helping the Oregon City people send some more people. But most of the time, we have a pretty good turnout. We've got a lot of regulators that are showing up to these cleanups now, and, you know, if we could get some more people, maybe to sponsor some of some of the other parks. I know we got the Nature Park. They have a group that does a cleanup, so they keep on top of that, but maybe some people at some of the other parks get some of those going as well.
Well, thank you very, very much for doing this.
Thank you. And like I said, any of you want to come out and help pick up some garbage? Looking for all the help we can get.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Next. Bob Everett?
Good evening. Bob Everett, 18235 Stonewood and 325 Portland Avenue. I'm here once again representing both Gladstone Oak Lodge Rotary and also the Community Festival, and just hoping that everyone can turn out. And today, I'd really like to just sort of thank some of our sponsors. That, of course, includes the city, who has generously donated all the time, and working with the city has always been a real treat for me, because everybody's been so, really so kind and accommodating to everything that's gone on, and to Tammy worked hard on for the insert the other day then, too, and we really appreciate that a great deal. I also want to thank North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce in Mount Hood Territory, because they gave us a grant which we are fulfilling, and it was a very generous grant. On top of that, Lattice was a wonderful sponsor for us, and they actually sponsored, as we would call the car show, and we'll be there and in force, and also we'll be at the park. Then there's the Gladstone Education Foundation. They gave us sponsorship, the Clackamas Federal Credit Union, and then, of course, there are a number of businesses around, including 24 Hour Fitness, who just, we just met with last week, and will be a part of everything. So, this has been, you know, this is a community sort of activity, and right now, we do have, as I mentioned last time, have over 70 booths, and this is, the parade should be fun, and hopefully, Juan has been working hard on the car show, and hopefully, we'll get a lot of cars out there. But anyway, I'd encourage everyone to come out, have a good time, and also, we did pick, I must admit, the Grand Marshall. I own Coates, was selected, and she's very well-qualified, and I want to thank everybody for all their applications. We had nine applications this year, and that more than doubled from before, and so we may, we may look at other, other ways of sort of honoring other people then, too, and everybody was very qualified. And it was close, but thank you so much. See everybody out.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Anybody else? All right. Well, as always, my goal is to keep these meetings respectful, engaging, and on task, and I hope that everyone here helps with that, and thank you for coming and participating in this process. So first is our consent agenda. Item one is approval of the June 7, 2017 special meeting minutes, June 13 and June 27 regular minutes, and the June 27 work session minutes. Does staff have anything to add or change?
Nothing, no.
Any comments?
Well, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, well, we're just not going to pull anything out. You guys just do it all as one.
I'll second that motion.
Just do it all as one. Okay, well, we're going to do the consent agenda all as one. So that's, it includes approval of the monthly financial reports, and change, it is the approval of the June check register and bank balances, legal costs on projects, and the department had monthly reports for June 2017. Motion, any further discussion? I know we already-
Sorry.
-that's when I made all those changes.
Didn't mean to jump again.
So, a motion was made by Counselor Reisner and seconded by Counselor McMahon. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda's passed. Do we have any correspondence? No correspondence. All right, then we're going to go on to the regular agenda. Item six is the direction on transient lodging tax. Acting Administrator Jackie Betts and Counselor Neese have been working on this diligently and will give us a report on our options.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, I think this is an exciting opportunity to talk to you today about a meeting that Counselor Neese and I had with Mr. Austin last week regarding transient lodging tax. And currently, there is an ORS allowed, Oregon revised statute, that allows municipalities, states, and counties to collect a transient lodging tax on establishments that provide overnight stay. That could be a campground, it could be a hotel, it could also be an Airbnb or a vacation rental. Gladstone is probably the only city I'm aware of that does not collect a transient lodging tax on its hotels, and there is an opportunity for us to collect from people who are staying in those accommodations, and some of that money can be used for offsetting public safety, general fund expenses, and then 70% of what's collected has to be spent on tourism, tourism-related activities for the Gladstone area, and we can talk a little bit about that in a minute. I'm going to have Counselor Neese talk a little bit about why she brought this forward to the council to consider, and then what we really are going to need to know is if this is something that the council wants to pursue, I could talk you through the process of doing that.
Thank you. We have been talking about this for the last year, and finally have got it put together, being able to move forward. We are not getting revenue from the transient room tax, and it will help the city, and it will help us with tourism to develop, especially with what's going on with the Lamont Falls project. It will help with the businesses in our community and bring people to our area. And Jackie is correct. We are the only city in this tri-city area that is not getting a transient room tax. So, the, but before we implement it, we need to make contact with the owners of the two hotels, one of them being the Holiday Inn Express, and the other one being the Budget Inn. Sit down and have conversation with them and make them aware of what we are going to be doing. We don't have to do this, but out of courtesy, we feel it's necessary, because we want to build a relationship. We don't want to just stronghold and say, you're going to do this, and that isn't going to benefit the city, and it will not benefit them. So we feel that this is the correct direction to go. It's an opportunity to bring business, again, into the community and to help us with revenue.
How much do we think that may bring in?
So, I'll run you through an example, and I do have quite a bit of experience coming from a coastal community in Florence. We collected quite a bit of transient lodging tax, and typically, here, the county is currently collecting 6% tax, and the state is collecting 1.8%. So when you go stay at a hotel, there's always a tax included in it, and that's how it's distributed right now in Clackamas County. So the city does not have a tax on top of that. Most cities are collecting 6% if you look at that, and that would be our recommendation if we were going to implement this, is that the city would do a 6%. But the hotel owners, the ones that are responsible for collecting and then administering the money to the city, would be allowed to keep 5% for collecting that. So, that's cumulative on top of what they collect. So if they collect 6% for the county, 1.8 for the state, and let's say 5 for the city, they get to keep 5% of total of what they collect as a way to help them administer the costs of the program. Jim Austin is here tonight, and he helped us kind of come up with a rough estimate. If you look at the Clackamas Park and the Riverside Hotel that Oregon City has, they're bringing in approximately 180,000 in transient lodging taxes.
Wow.
So with that, if you've got, the split has to be 70% back into promoting your community, and that could be through doing trails maps, parks maps, there's all kinds of possibilities we could use that funds for. Then the other 30% could just go into the general fund to help offset public safety, law enforcement for the enforcement of that. So, I'm going to ask Jim, was there anything that you wanted to add to the presentation tonight in regards to about how much revenue could be generated?
Come on up.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, the numbers I provided, I just asked Oregon City, because they have a 6% transient lodging tax as well. They have one hotel, it's the Riverside. They also have the RV Park that's down at Clackamas Park, but that's only seasonal, so, and, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't get the information for Gladstone from our finance department, because that's considered proprietary, so I just asked Oregon City, well, what's your total budget for what you bring in? And it was about $188,000.
Correct.
So, thinking that Gladstone's net would probably be about the same. The nice thing about transient lodging taxes is it does provide revenues for local communities. The state statute allows for the 30% for other purposes, general fund, public safety, what have you, 70% for tourism promotion and development, trails, projects. And the nice thing about it is, these are people coming in from somewhere else, paying a transient lodging tax, and then you're using that, their, you know, their transient lodging tax dollars to try to entice more people to come here. So there's no burden on your local citizens. It's paid by visitors from outside of the area, so I think there's a couple of great projects that could be supported here in the community, and this is a good opportunity to get some funds to do that. That's it.
How many hotels are in Oregon City?
There's just the one. It's the Riverside in Oregon City.
It's the only one?
Yep.
That's the only hotel in Oregon City?
Correct. There is one being developed.
There's nothing up on top of the hill or anything, huh?
Just the one, just the Riverside.
Really?
And like I said, there's the, there's the RV Park that's down at Clackamas Park, which is actually operated by the City Parks Department, so.
Correct. Hmm.
Interesting.
So you had mentioned the Airbnb and vacation rentals. How do you capture that?
Well, you know, it's an interesting conversation, because the League of Oregon Cities right now is struggling, because there is some litigation regarding that, and so you have an option. You can implement the transient lodging tax just on hotels and not include Airbnbs or vacation rentals, or Clackamas County just approved an ordinance that has that language in there, so we could take a look at that and see if that's something that we want to incorporate in there. But the other project that we're working on is the business license program, and currently, we're getting inquiries into whether or not Airbnbs require a business license, or do vacation rentals. So this, all could kind of be flushed out together as we work through the business license program process, as well as implementing a transient lodging tax. My recommendation would be to go ahead and mirror what the county has put into place, and we could bring back a draft ordinance for the council to consider. It would have to be implemented by an ordinance. It would not have to be a vote of the citizens in the community. It would take 30 days to implement the program, but like Counselor Neese said, I really think we need to spend some time in talking to the hotel owners to make sure that they understand that we're doing this and why we're doing it. We want them to be a partner in this, and so there's some steps that we need to go through before we just come back to council for you to approve the ordinance.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you want to engage them in this process instead of just throwing it at them and telling them they have to comply. This is the right approach, for sure.
I agree. It's a good approach, but of course, I would say that Holiday Inn is expecting this. They're probably, I mean, last time I used it, they charged me a 6% city tax, and-
Yeah.
-they probably just pocketed it. I would expect-
We've had that structure.
This is not be anything new for them, or Budget Inn either, so.
They're competitive rates. They are collecting it, as you say, and they don't, they don't like having to collect it and administer it, but, you know, this has been allowed for municipalities for so many years to do this, and really, it's how we capture revenue and increase our revenue source here without, like Jim said, imposing a tax on the citizens.
Okay, so do you want us to make a motion tonight to move forward with this, or, yeah, okay?
Well, I'd like to make that motion, then, that we move forward with, going forward with imposing, or moving the process forward for a transient lodging tax, and also, I firmly want us to make sure that we hook up the Airbnbs and any of the VBOs and stuff, at least look into that as well.
Yes.
Your second, Pat.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor McMahon, seconded by Counselor Mercero. Do we have any further discussion?
One thing, anything else that we might have missed that, you know, since you're kind of a resident expert in the room?
No, I think that pretty much covers it. Counselor McMahon, the 6% you saw on your, on the bill, is it possible that that could have been the county's transient lodging tax?
I may have fibbed a little bit.
But it's confusing, but it all gets blended together, so.
But they're used to paying a tax.
Yes, I mean, Holiday Inn is-
And I also want to thank Lynn and Neese for bringing this forward. I know it's something that she even talked, has been talking about more than just a year, back before she became on the council, because we talked about it, and so, thank you for pushing it forward.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is seven, which is city council appointment process.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. So currently, you have two openings for city council position, and that deadline is July 17, I believe is at 4:00 PM. Looking ahead, next week, you are forecasting that you would like to do an interview process. What you have in your packet here is the mayor has proposed that there be a committee of two citizens, two council members, and two staff to do the interviews, and that a recommendation would come back to the city council on the 25th. Your charter requires that each member of you appoint in open session, so we would do a roll call vote on who you choose. And then that evening, we would like to swear in those two new people, so that we can conduct business that evening and keep moving forward, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. So what Ms. Bannock and I would like to know this evening is if this is the consensus of the council to follow this process, and if so, we would like to know who you would like us to talk to regarding being on the committee to do the interviews, so we can go ahead and get those set up.
I agree with that process, and I would like to be involved.
Okay, Pat?
Yep.
Neil, I know you had some concerns.
Oh, I did, in that, as I was, I was reading through this and thinking about what, you know, what we discussed last month on the process, I was, I guess my concern is the recommendations that come forth, if I disagree with them. So, you know, do we need to, you know, are we being required to rubber stamp what's being, you know?
No.
Yeah.
Nope, not.
Oh, okay. And then also, so that was my main, and then another question I had, or was curious about, is on the application, it asks for a particular position, which I hadn't-
Position what you're applying for, city council. I don't think, since they're both-
Oh, okay, so it wasn't, so it wasn't a position number?
No, they're both.
Okay, then I, I was looking too deep into it.
So, my understanding, or my belief, is we just take the two, yeah, we're not particular position one and three.
And that's a good clarifying question, because a lot of the applicants are putting either one or the other position, or both, so if you all agree that it is just open for two positions-
Yeah.
-then that's how we will accept them.
I think that makes the most sense.
Yep. The terms both end at the same time, right?
Yep, right.
Correct, yeah, in the next year.
That makes it simple.
And then a follow-up is, do you want to interview all of them? You don't have to. You could just choose to interview a handful of them, or a couple, or do you want to interview all of them that have applied?
How many do you have so far?
Five, isn't it?
Five?
I believe there's four.
Four.
Okay.
But they could get more, being that we've got a week.
I'm anticipating very short interviews, not lengthy half-an-hour things, something that's quick.
I would, I know I would like to interview all of them.
Okay, well, then we'll have to put our name in a hat and draw names, because we can only have two.
We should-
Well, are you meaning, I'm curious, are you meaning you want to have all the applicants interviewed?
Oh.
Or are you saying you're wanting to also be-
No, the applicants be interviewed.
Okay.
And when I was, and I know we did it before the audience, when I applied.
The appointment, which is what we're going to be doing here as well.
Well, and the applicant, and the, well, yeah, but the interview process was also done in public.
Hmm. If you're only using two couns- If you're only using two council members, you don't have to notice it as a public meeting. If all of you are going to interview, then it would be...
Or a quorum.
A public, yeah, or a quorum.
So then, I'm curious, how many recommendations are going to be put forth? Do you get, are you thinking...
We only have four.
Well, my hope is that the committee comes up with two, two recommendations. And if we disagree with that, well, then we disagree with it.
Personally, I think you have to look at your candidates, okay? And look at what they provide you with information. For example, if you've got three persons or, or two persons, we'll say, that don't have any experience or don't have any whatever, you may rule them out where if you have total information that you've got on people, then you choose. And what I'm saying to summarize it, I think it depends on the candidates. And you may review them all because it's appropriate, or you may not review anybody. I kind of think that won't happen, but...
Well, that's what I was asking. I'm not asking, well, I was, I was curious if it would be flexible is what you're suggesting.
Yeah, it's gotta be, I think.
Okay.
Depends on the candidate.
And I agree.
Could we videotape them?
Do we want to?
Then I can watch it and make up my own mind.
It's up to you guys.
That'd be a good idea. That's all your problem, the recommendation.
We could do the interviews in here and have the video on. That's fine.
Right.
If you want.
I do.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
I didn't follow that one.
Oh, sorry.
So as long as we videotape it, then everybody can watch it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if we're not going to follow the recommendation, and that's what I'm understanding, then I'd like to at least see what the answers are to the questions and go from there.
That's fine. Then maybe we just need to rethink this whole process then because it sounds like we're verging away from this. What do we want to do?
Well, the problem there is you're allowing two people to make a recommendation for city council and I think that's where we're...
It's six people.
Two, you're making, but yes, but you're allowing two city councillors to make recommendations for the two seats. And I think we should all be able to either see the interview process or just have them come up front for five minutes before or something like that.
Okay. So do you agree with this makeup of this committee to do the interviews?
Yes.
Okay. So the next step is that we need to select two council or the mayor this evening and did you want to do that process, David?
Can we just put names in a hat or how do we want to do that?
Sure, there's really no, you know, if there's not a consensus on the two, then, or if you just prefer to do it that way, absolutely. Names in a hat, numbers.
But how are we going to choose?
Just what, I'm...
Citizens the same. Anybody that wants to be involved in the process, throw your name in a hat and let's pick two.
Like, okay.
Then there's no bias.
What if they're not, what if they're not here?
Well, then we can pick the name tomorrow or the next day. Say, get your names into Jackie by Friday.
And then how are we going to pick?
Jackie can pick two names out of a hat. Why, do we need to overthink this?
No, no, I'm trying...
I think it's probably the simplest thing in the world, especially considering we're going to be watching the interviews on separate feeds, so I don't think this needs to be overthought.
No, I'm just, and I'm trying not to make it that way. I was just cur, you know, curious as to how the process was going, you know, envisioned.
Well, I know if each of us sat up here and said, "I want that person and that person," well, that would be a clear bias and people wouldn't go for that. So I think pulling names out of a hat is probably the safest way to do this.
That works.
Do you want to do yours this evening?
Yeah, why don't we do ours this evening?
And you can save mine. I do not, won't have time next week to...
Tom, do you want to do it? Be part of the interview process?
I think Tom said yes.
Yeah, he already did.
Yep, is all right.
And I'll bow out also.
Linda?
I'm not going to be available either.
Okay, well, that makes it easy. Cammy and Tom, it's the two of us.
All righty. So we have the two council members, two citizens. How would you like to choose those?
Anybody that's interested, get the word out, put a name on a piece of paper and get it to Jackie by Friday and she will draw names on Friday, Friday afternoon.
Well, can I make a suggestion? And how about if we just do the ones that are here this evening and have them put their name in?
Because Neil said, what if they're not here?
Well, what I was going to say, I...
We did post that we were discussing the process.
Well, that's true. I was just asking. I'm not saying that they can't. I was just asking.
We did post it and made people aware and I feel, you know, they took the time to come and they should be the ones to put their name in.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good? All right. All those people that are interested?
What day is it again?
And we're going to do it the week of the 18th through the 21st, but it's going to be flexible. There's hardly any people, so I can't imagine it's going to be more than, you know, an hour and a half, two hours at the most.
It'll be next week.
We would try to schedule them all in one day. And if we get a run on applicants at the deadline and have seven or eight, we might need to rethink that, but right now we have four.
Give me some yellows so we don't have a mix up of colors so people think there's an issue.
It'll be afternoon, evening. Oh, that's right, you can't... Staff, well, you don't want to pay overtime to staff, right?
That's right.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just think we should just do who's here.
No, 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 that works.
Okay, so why staff?
I read that problem before.
And I'm sorry if I sounded like I was questioning that.
No, that's fine.
I was just asking the question.
No, that's fine. Jackie, for staff, do you want to do something similar where staff that's interested gets you their names and draw from a hat?
I think arm wrestling, whoever...
Or do you want to just appoint people? I just want it very clear that there's no bias, that we are not handpicking the folks.
There it is. Nice. Very pretty.
Fancy ball.
No, no, I'm sorry.
One.
That makes it really easy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're passing one. Yeah. Like Ron Strawn.
Yeah. So we want to make sure who gets chosen, that we get your contact information so that we can let you know when we have the interviews. So staff, how do you want to do that?
I can select somebody to do that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, if you guys are fine with that.
Yeah, but I just want to make it clear, hopefully, that we want to make sure that we have people seated on the 25th so that we have a full council moving forward because we've got a lot of stuff on our schedule for the next two months.
So part of that process then on the 25th is that this committee, yes, will make a recommendation, but you could choose differently if you want to. If applicants are present tonight, I will share with you that part of this process will be for you to read the July 25th packet and be ready to make a decision on the next item on the agenda for that evening because if you, we don't know who it's going to be, but if it's you and you get sworn in, we'd like you to be prepared for that. So we'll be letting the applicants know that they have a little bit of homework to do.
That is the final question.
Yes.
Show up prepared.
Little homework.
Yep. If you don't show up, then you don't want it.
What is item number seven on the agenda?
Yeah, close those out.
Yep, yeah, that way we get full council.
It's his brother, come on.
If they all have been... Have David pull. Yeah, David, you want to pull?
I am happy to pull. So I'm pulling, I'm pulling two, correct?
Two, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's do better than...
And the name is?
Our first contestant is Les Poole.
All right. And I think we already have your contact info.
And Mindy Garland.
Perfect.
Oh.
Cool. All right. And then we'll know staff and...
I choose Marna Barnes.
Perfect. And then you're going to do it also?
And I will do it also. Yep.
Thank you.
I think that is a great group.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Mindy and Les, thank you guys for stepping up.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. And everybody else that's...
A bunch of people in here, yeah.
I was going to say, and everybody else.
We'll find something else for you guys to do. So we're going to keep the names.
Yeah.
We're going to fill the, backfill the other things we need done.
There you go.
In fact, we can sign them tonight, right? We've got several jobs we can get now.
Yep. The list is getting more.
Perfect.
Okay, David, keep drawing names. All right. We don't need to make a motion or anything. We're just giving direction on how this is going. All right. Okay. So next is business carried forward. Do we have anything?
Oh, you've got a nice lady in the back waving her hand coming forward.
Oh, sure.
Something about carried forward. Oh, thank you. Oh, going with lavender. Or is it purple?
Are you part of the business carried forward?
Is this citizens' business or you?
Um, we are on business carried forward. Business from the audience is next.
Okay. Because this is something I'm not sure you've talked about yet.
Oh, okay. If you want, you can sit there and get the seat warm or you can...
I'll do that.
All right.
So what I've handed out to you is the agenda planning calendar. And the reason why I bring it to you again tonight is because we are getting very full and tonight may seem like a light agenda and the 25th as well, but starting in August, I think I've taken all of your Tuesdays all the way through October. Not all the Tuesdays, but what you'll find is that our transportation system plan, our parks master plan, our downtime revitalization plan are all coming to a head where we are needing to go through the planning process and then get them to city council for adoption. So what I wanted to show you is enjoy July because it's going to get very busy in August. And actually, there's a lot of exciting things going on too. I do want to share with you that we received a notice of the appeal on the 52-unit apartments today. And so I am going to poll you. You get to choose which date it is. It could be Wednesday, August 2nd or Thursday, August 10th. We have noticing requirements that we have to stay within parameters and so those are the only two dates that I have. And we will also need to make sure our two new city councillors are available, but that's part of the package.
Jackie, repeat those dates again, I'm sorry.
You can have Wednesday, August 2nd or Thursday, August 10th.
And you as well, Sir David, yeah.
Yes, yeah, either one works for me.
I like the second just so that we can get to it before our schedule gets insane.
I can do either days.
Yeah. Same here, either one.
Tom?
I'm hoping both ways.
August 2nd works for me.
August 2nd.
August 2nd. Okay, and just, we will, we will have that here. We will start our noticing. So you have July 25th, August 2nd, and then it goes into your regular meetings of August 8th. On the 15th, we added a joint planning commission meeting with the transportation system plan. And then your other regular scheduled meetings in there. And I wanted to end with letting everyone know that we have scheduled our town hall meeting for October 19th. And that will be at the high school and we'll put out more information on that. And that's all I had.
Should we thank you for...
Please, yes, thank you.
We have no time for vacations or...
Your summer is gone.
Our summer is gone. All right. Any other business carried forward? From Malachi?
Jackie, regarding your comments about the two councillors, I believe two of them would have to recuse themselves if they were selected on that.
You know, I will have conversations with David. I know the county attorney weighed in on that briefly and said that they would not have to, but we will follow up on that.
Anything else? All right. So now we move on to business from the audience.
Okay. National Night Out is August 1st. Has there been any thought about that with the group, with the city?
Yes. We actually received flyers today and I have it somewhere. Here it is. Carol is coordinating it. It's going to be Tuesday, August 1st.
Right.
There's a flyer out, so I think they're just coordinated and it's going to look similar to what it has in the past.
So who's the city person to register with for the neighborhood?
It's going through the police department and I believe it's Maria.
Right, okay. Well, I hadn't heard anything about it and we're doing it again, so I was just wondering if the city group would be making the round.
Yeah, it's last minute.
Okay.
If you want to help be on the committee for next year, that would be great, Sherri.
Well, and you know, I've been on it for, or I've done it for a long time and that's kind of how we started. There were meetings every month and I hadn't heard anything, so I just was curious if the city group was coming because we are doing ours, so...
Okay, well, write Sherri's name down on that little yellow piece of paper. We've got her volunteered for a committee.
Thank you, Sherri.
I'm going to have one downtown here because nobody has one in my neighborhood, so I'm just going to meet people here and have a city hall one in case anybody feels lonely.
The first year we did it was at the parking lot right here with the city police and fire.
Yeah. They're still going to go around, but I'm just going to, for those people that have no place to go, you have a place. We're going to do it here.
What time is it?
I was thinking seven.
Okay.
I just kind of decided that now, so, there we go. All right. Any more business from the audience?
Nothing.
Okay, business from the council. How about we'll start with Councilor Neese?
Um, no, just, Jackie and I met with Jim Austin. I've been working with 24-hour fitness training and we will be having information going out pertaining to their grand opening and what's going to be happening there. And then working with Bob on the Gladstone Community Festival. So it's been a busy couple of weeks with this.
Councilor Reisner?
So as Les mentioned, I had a great Parks Board meeting last night talking about the master plan, which will be before us here in a couple of months. And it's coming together and there's a lot of great input from the members. And I understand it was a great, 4th of July?
Nope.
Oh, that's your, oh, that's yours, sorry.
Don't you talk about that.
Sorry. So have a great July and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Councilor McMahon?
I just went to the Ryanirson Pond meeting today and that is go. They're going to, they've already taken turtles out. They're going to start the drawdown of the pond so that they can demolish the dam and start doing all the stream work that they want to recreate there. So, pretty exciting.
I have a question on Ryanerson. It's quite the buzz in the environmental world right now, and when the contract was originally written, the, there's a mitigation bank that is going to buy the enhancements that we're doing, and we were supposed to get 50% of the profits from the sale of those credits.
That's correct.
When are those going to start being sold? Is there an accounting as far as what's truly profit and what's not profit? Because way back then, it was estimated that the city would get between a million and $4 million potentially.
Well, I've never heard that number, so that I cannot attest to. They have not sold, the credits have not been sold yet, because they have not received any, they, the Falling Springs has not gotten approval, has not gotten final approval from the trustees, they are confident enough that they will, that they are going to start the work prior to final approval. They have, not, they have marks that they have to meet to get the credits from the trustees, from the superfund site trustees. One of the first ones would be approval, so they're not going to get credits until September, October even, to begin selling. They get another big chunk, I think you said 30% of the credits come to them when they finish the initial projects, which he thought was going to be, include plantings, which probably wouldn't be until December to January for the final plantings on everything.
Okay, so all that's coming up?
Yes, and as far as the million to $4 million, I think that's pie in the sky, I've never heard of it. As far as the counting, I don't know how that, it's after the, it's after Falling Springs has paid all of their costs, which they have spent, I have no idea, but I wouldn't be surprised if it was a couple hundred thousand dollars of their own money already in the last couple of years leading up to this. Once they are, all that is covered, and their annuities for the maintenance for 10 years and maintenance into perpetuity, then it becomes a 50-50 split.
Okay, do we have, are there checks and balances there? Do we have our, do we have Carolyn look at the spreadsheet?
I do not know.
Okay, and then, what was the other question I was going to ask you? So, has that money that we're going to get from the sale of these credits, is that earmarked for specific funds, or is it just a general fund?
To best my knowledge, when they signed this four or five years ago, I don't think it was a, it was a hope that they would get some money, but I don't think four or five years, I, if you'd asked me two years ago that we were going to get any money, I always said no, so we'll still see if he's able to sell credits, but he is going to spend the money to get the project going, so...
Well, since we're getting to the point, the milestones are being met soon, and the potential for getting revenue is soon, I think we need...
No, the potential is probably three to five years out before, I think, that they're going to have enough credits sold to even start getting money, so...
We need to start thinking about where that money's going to go, if it goes general fund, or what do we do? David, you've been a part of this from the beginning, so...
Yes, and I think that we are entitled to an account, accountability piece of this, and David and I'll work through that as well, yes.
The contract talks specifically about our right to say, hey, you know, we'd like to have an accounting, and go through the books, and see what matches what.
Okay, I want to make sure we have that.
But the way that councillor McMahon described what money, if any, the city gets is accurate, it basically comes at the end when all of their, which is natural, I mean, they're putting the money up, so all their costs are accounted for.
Okay. Alright.
Question if I may, how do they access that area, you know, taking care of the dam and all? Is that from the north side?
No, they're accessing it from the city side, because they're using a lot of the city property in this process. Most of the, most of the, most of the water of the pond is in the city property, and then they're moving a lot of dirt out of the pond to some low spots, and to the area just to the south.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councillor Merschro?
I represent the car show that Mr. Everett talked about. And the Rotary Club has already donated money for the flyers and made them, and the trophies are purchased, and I just got the raffle money available, and club members have accepted $350 donations so far, and we've got six cars pre-interned, and we also got for donations a freezer, and either one or two car batteries, of which, like we did last year, we'll auction them off at the show. And so, who knows what we'll get for those, but it was pretty good last year, if I remember it. We expect the past experiences says we'll get about 200 cars, and then this year with the motorcycles joining in, I think the, the number of bikes predicted is about 200, I think, also. So, be lots of activity, and hopefully, I won't get worn out that day. That's all.
Well, thank you. And I just wanted to thank the police department, fire department, the Celebrate Gladstone people that are sitting here, that did amazing job with games, and staff for the 4th of July community barbecue, it was a huge success. I think we had over 350 people show up, we ran out of food, we had to make a run to Safeway. It was wonderful, it was one of those small-town events that just make you love your town even more. It was great. I had nothing but great comments from people, so, that was it. Thank you very much. Anything else? Someone like to make a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second it.
Motion was made by councillor Reisner, seconded by councillor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:25 PM.